Clerk, please read the roll first.
Bestin, Bullock, Bergdolph, Chapman, Clay, Clenahan, Camiso, Kraus, Cunningham, Dawson, Demalowits, Drake, Ethier, Feeny, Fine, Grimm, Higgins, Hogan, Andrew Joyce,
Here.
Raymond Joyce, LaCockes, Lockhart, Mariello, Mayo, McKnight, McLean Lane, Mendick, Miller, O'Brien, Plotsky, Reinhardt, Signorachi, Simpson, Smith, Stevens, Touche, Tony, Ward, Willingham.
Clerk, please read Resolution Number 78.
Resolution Number 78, Public Hearing on Proposed Local Law Number A for 2018. Resolved by the County Legislature of the County of Albany that a public hearing on proposed local law number A for 2018, a local law of the County of Albany, New York prohibiting the sale of tobacco and other nicotine delivery products in pharmacies in the County of Albany, New York, be held by the County Legislature in the William J. Convoy Second Legislative Chambers, Albany County Courthouse, Albany, New York at 7:15 PM on Tuesday, March 27, 2018. And the clerk of the county legislature is directed to cause notice of such hearing to be published containing the necessary information in accordance with the applicable provisions of law. Affidavits of publication are on file in the clerk's office.
Speakers all called in the order. Their names appear on the sign-up sheet. Speakers are permitted three minutes to express their views. Speakers may not ask questions of legislators, and legislators may not ask questions of speakers except for clarification. First name on the list, please.
Maston Sansom.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Maston Sansom. I'm with the Food Industry Alliance of New York State, the Vice President of Government Relations there. We represent supermarkets all throughout the state, as well as those, of course, within the County of Albany. And I just wanted to speak on this resolution. As many of you might be aware, grocery stores and our members, particularly the ones in Albany County, currently conceal all tobacco products from view. And they also don't advertise. There might be a little sign that might say it's available, but I'm not even sure about that. It just would have the required signage pursuant to any health law or regulations. And we think that is a better way to go. So I would ask the legislature to consider maybe an exception for stores that do, in fact, conceal the products and don't advertise the products. Because what will happen is, consumers will be forced to go to other locations, like gas stations, things like that, that do, in fact, heavily advertise, as well as have it visible for everyone, including children, to see. So just respectfully ask that you would consider that. Thank you.
Sarah Phelps.
Hi, I'm here as a mom tonight. I have a family with three kids that I brought with me tonight. My youngest is in daycare here in the city of Albany. My other two children go to an elementary school in the town of Bethlehem. And as little as my youngest is, I know in the blink of an eye she'll be off to middle school next year, like my oldest will be. So I'm here to tell a little bit of a story. Ironically, just a few weeks ago, my oldest is 10, and she asked me which type of store sells the most cigarettes. And that was the start of a rather interesting conversation to have with a 10-year-old. So I said, unfortunately, they're pretty much everywhere. They're in gas stations, they're in convenience stores, they're in grocery stores, and even some pharmacies. And she was really surprised that some of these places sell cigarettes. And it was awfully hard to give any reason why they would be in a pharmacy in particular. It really makes absolutely no sense that they're there. It makes no sense when a mom like me, who has to frequent a pharmacy to get antibiotics, sometimes three times a week for three kids, with her kids in tow to get the medicine, has to subject her kids to big tobacco's marketing through advertising, but also through the display of their products. They are not like other products. They are the only product that, when used as directed, kills up to a third or a half of the people who use them. They are the only products that contribute to the number-one cause of preventable death. They are the only product that kills more people than AIDS, alcohol, car accidents, illegal drugs, murders, and suicides combined. It also makes no sense because pulling tobacco off the shelves in pharmacies will not cause a hit to local businesses. Nearly all of the locally-owned pharmacies stopped selling tobacco products even before CVS. So I am here in hopes that you are more concerned about my three kids, and your kids, and all the kids in Albany County than you are about Big Tobacco, who is squarely focused on the bottom line. I'm also here in part because of the conversation that I had with my daughter a few weeks ago. I want her and my other kids to see that when things don't make sense, you can do something about it. You can be a part of a change, and you can be part of a solution. And so I'm hoping that there will be a solution because that really is what makes sense. Thank you.
Judy Wrightmeyer.
Hello, I'm Judy Wrightmeyer, and I'm coming with props. I am the Director of the Capital District Tobacco-Free Communities. And I stood here five years ago, actually, it was five years ago, April 23rd. That was when the first public hearing for ending tobacco sales in pharmacies, the first public hearing ever in New York State for that happened here. And as some of you know, as some of you remember, there was tremendous community support for that. And the community mobilization that came from that actually went and helped push Rockland County and New York City to pass tobacco-free pharmacy laws. So with a population of over 8 million people, we probably have more people now in New York State that are thankfully covered by that law. So a lot changed since 2013. In Massachusetts, when I first came to share that information, there was just 50 communities in Massachusetts that had tobacco-free pharmacies. Now there's over 160. There's over 750 pharmacies that no longer sell tobacco there in Massachusetts. And it has crossed all grocery stores, pharmacies. There's 112 Rite-Aids, there's 112 Walgreens, there's 26 Walmarts, 10 Hanafords, 6 Price Choppers. So there are these retails, the grocery stores that have a pharmacy, and pharmacies have implemented this policy. And one of the things I wanted to show you, and I think I showed this picture five years ago. But I went to Massachusetts more than five years ago and took pictures of what their shelves looked like. So I believe this was Eckert, which then got bought out and became Rite-Aid. But they took the tobacco off, and they filled it with other products that tend to be products that they sometimes lose off the shelves when they're not behind the counter. So there's a lot of electronics and earbuds. When I spoke to the clerks in the pharmacies there and the grocery stores, I said, how, you know, when this law went into place, how did it go? Was it difficult? They said, not really, a ship. A delivery truck came up, took the tobacco products off, they rearranged their stores, just like CVS has done. So there is precedence for that to happen. We also, excuse me? Oh, boy, quick, and we go. So I guess what I wanted to share was that there is community support for this. We have just recently done a, CNN Research Institute did a survey, and they found that still 70% of Albany County residents do not want to see tobacco sold in pharmacies. There's 200 postcards here of community residents that want to see that practice end. And what else did I want to share? I guess mostly I wanted to say that 300, right now, there's over 300 tobacco retailers in Albany County. If there's 33 law went into place, it would decrease the density of tobacco retailers by about 10%. So no longer would you be able to walk into a pharmacy and see the smoking section right next to the stop-smoking section. So thank you very much.
Mr. Ethier.
Holly Kazer.
Mr. Ethier.
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
Have you met some of the establishment establishments? Was that done by law or voluntary?
Those were done by law.
No, we don't.
No, those were done by law. In Massachusetts, there's a number of municipalities that passed the laws naming tobacco sales in pharmacies. There's also 14 municipalities in California, the Rockland County one, New York City, all laws, all municipalities.
With no voluntary?
The voluntary ones was, CVS did it voluntarily back in 2014, but then they have to comply with the laws, too. The problem with voluntary is that at any time, the corporation can say, you know what, we don't want to stay with that policy. I know it was mentioned that grocery stores voluntarily have covered up the product. That's something that we work with grocery stores, share information about what the visualization of seeing those tobacco products can do to youth initiation to tobacco, to tobacco use rates. And so those stores did voluntarily cover up the products in the grocery stores. I know Hanaford has done it, ShopRite, and Price ShopRite. Price ShopRite has also made the policy that when they switch themselves over to Market 32, they are ending the sale of tobacco. So they know that it's not something that they, not a product that they want to continue to sell. The thing with voluntary policies is that at any time, like I said, they could change it that way. And if they're not necessarily changing, we're going to get across all the stores.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Joyce.
Can you move back?
Sure, sorry.
Just to stem off Hill's comment, I believe, and thank you for sticking with us since 2014, I remember your comments back then. I think we did pass 2117 back then. Voluntary efforts, I think in 2014 didn't involve independent pharmacies banning at that time.
Yes.
Albany County.
Yes, I think there is no independent pharmacy in Albany County that sells tobacco. I think independent pharmacists, as most pharmacists, they know that it's contradictory to the work that they do. They're in the business of health. So that certainly independent pharmacies that have a lot more autonomy over their stores, they do not sell.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Ms. Plotsky.
Yes, thank you for speaking today. Of the 300 retailers in Albany County, how many are the grocery stores that sell tobacco?
How many are the grocery stores that sell tobacco? I have those numbers, and I can give you them. Grocery stores that sell tobacco. Oh, yeah, I'd have to, you know, those two. There are a significant number of those.
So the 33 pharmacies didn't include the others?
The 33 pharmacies that sell tobacco include Price Shoppers that have a pharmacy, or a Hanaford that has a pharmacy. There's one ShopRite, I know that one off the top of my head, that has a pharmacy and sells. There's three ShopRites in Albany County, but only one has a pharmacy and sells. So it would only affect, let me think.
So they are rooted in that 30?
Stores that contain a pharmacy would affect those grocery stores that have a pharmacy in them.
Mr. Melo.
Back decades and decades. So there's no benefit of this product. That's not a realistic possibility. So what I desire to start smoking, for young people, and putting things in place to help those people that are addicted stop. And Albany County has done some of that. One of the things I want to say, where young people are going and are finding that then they, some young people are switching or dual-using with cigarettes.
Mr. Demals.
Thank you for coming. The reason why Price ShopRite 32s are doing away with the cigarettes is because they're trying to mimic Wegmans. And Wegmans has been a forefront of banning cigarette sales from the beginning. So you won't find Wegmans store anywhere that sells cigarettes.
Yeah, they made that.
So it can be done.
Yes, and it can be done without detriment to sales and to the profits. You know, CVS has done very well without having to sell cigarettes. There's other products that are, you know, that have high costs, that they put in the place where the tobacco products were. And the other thing, it's just the right thing to do. Selling cigarettes in pharmacies is inhumorous. And I'm a nurse of whatever means.
Holly.
Hi, I'm here this evening. My role here in Albany County is a health educator at Bethlehem Medical School. I also am a coordinator of the SAD Club, which is Students Against Destructive Decisions. My message tonight, too, is very simple, but very short. Help us help our students. I work with a wonderful group of students who are well-educated. We provide them with the knowledge to make healthy decisions in all different topics, and of course, tobacco, anti-tobacco. And they have that knowledge, and we talk about making healthy decisions. But as we all know, our brain is not fully developed in the decision-making process until we're in our mid-20s, which makes it extra challenging for our students, especially with the influences of advertising and everything else they see out there. Just last week, we participated in an event, Kick Butt Day at school, which was awesome because it was student-led. Other students educated the entire school about anti-tobacco and taking tobacco out of pharmacies. The response was wonderful. The kids had lots of questions and pushed lots of information out there. So I asked you to help us help our students in making better decisions, helping them buy them with their decisions. Last week, again, student-led, there were over 100 students who filled out these cards to send here tonight, represent, take away tobacco out of pharmacies. So I appreciate your time. Help us help our students everywhere in Albany County. Thank you.
Tom Ellis.
Good evening, my name's Tom Ellis. I live here in Albany on North Pine Ave. I strongly impede some reasonable exercise of government power to pass this type of law. This isn't an example of a nanny state gone crazy. This is an important take. It would be better if the state government did it, and it would be best of all if this national government did it. But since they're not doing it, it's up to local government to take the step, and maybe we can push the state government to do it. Now that we've got more than, we've got six counties where 8 million people live already in New York State. It's almost half the state's population. In New York State, certainly locally, supermarkets cultivate an image of health. I think outside of the Hanafords, it says a healthy living center on the wall of the building. They sell products that are labeled as pure, natural, and fresh. These words don't have any legal meaning, but they create an image that the businesses are in favor of protecting their health. I think that pharmacies and supermarkets, as has been said, tobacco is always dangerous or unhealthy when it's used as directed or used at all, or even if you're near somebody who's using it. I think that enacting this ban will send a powerful message that the Albany County Legislature wants to reduce the number of people who use tobacco products and the early deaths that result from such use. In response to a question in order, I would strongly oppose passing a law that would ban the use of tobacco or the sale of tobacco anywhere in the United States. I think that would create an enormous underground economy. People would have to arm themselves. We'd have more violence. Smokers would become criminals. It would be crazy to do that. But taking this step to make it a little bit more difficult for people to buy the products is reasonable. Mr. McCoy, the county executive, has said that he desires Albany County to be the greenest county in New York State. Let's one-up him on that. Let's make Albany County the healthiest county in New York State as well. In recent years, Albany County has joined with other counties in the United States as a plaintiff in a lawsuit versus many pharmaceutical companies for their involvement or possible involvement in escalation of the opioid crisis. So we're seeing evidence with tobacco and with opioids that some pharmaceutical companies are undermining our health and adding to our healthcare costs and increasing our taxes in their efforts to maximize profits. I'm glad to see Albany County being proactive on opioids. Let us remain proactive on tobacco, too. Lots of progress has been made since I was a kid on tobacco issues and in reducing the percentage of the population that smoke. Let's keep going. Thank you.
Ashley Lewis.
Hello, Ashley Lewis. I live in Albany County. Pharmacies are facilities intended to help maintain and improve health. Tobacco products do not belong there for several reasons. First, tobacco negatively affects every single organ in the human body. Tobacco is dangerous, highly addictive, and unhealthy. Also, pharmacies have medications to help people quit tobacco use. For people quitting, seeing tobacco products can be a trigger for them to want to smoke, making quitting harder. Additionally, taking tobacco products out of pharmacies can help denormalize tobacco use. Having pharmacies not sell tobacco leads tobacco to be less visible and available. When perspectives about tobacco change in this way, it can help young people to have healthier behaviors by helping prevent them from even starting to smoke in the first place. Therefore, having tobacco in pharmacies doesn't make sense, and it's also very harmful. I'm asking you to help the public be safer and healthier. I'm asking you to please get tobacco products out of pharmacies that do not belong there. Thank you.
Amy Klein.
Thank you. My name is Amy Klein. I'm an Albany County resident, and I don't want to repeat anything that anybody else has said. But I guess my biggest issue with the concept of tobacco in pharmacies, and, you know, I was here five years ago advocating for this, is that pharmacies are places more and more where we are relying on them to be places of health. They're offering flu shots and shingle shots and things of that nature. I personally refuse to have any of those healthcare services provided in a pharmacy because to me, if they're selling cigarettes, they're not providing for my health. And, you know, as a legislative body, you're, of course, concerned about the cost of healthcare, which is rising. And having pharmacies available for the public to be able to provide those kinds of services are critically important. So I encourage you to think about what that message is that we're sending to people, that we're encouraging them to go to places where they are sending these dual messages of health, but not health. And while I know that many members of the legislature are interested in supporting this legislation, and I truly appreciate that as a citizen, I would also say that I think more education needs to be done to other members of the executive and other branches to make sure that this piece of legislation gets through and becomes law this time around. So this is critically important, and we need to make sure that it doesn't just get through this body, but actually becomes law. So thank you.
Carol Waterman.
I submitted 49, excuse me, 46 form letters that people had signed in support of local law A. And I just want to say that two of those letters were signed in crayon by a four-year-old and an eight-year-old. And believe me, they really did know what they were signing and had stuff to say about this. Anyway, the rest were all signed by adults. One-fifth of all debts in America are from tobacco. Now, as far as I am concerned, the tobacco companies are murderers, plain and simple. And pharmacies that sell tobacco and retail establishments that have pharmacies that sell tobacco, I believe they are enablers and co-conspirators in what the tobacco companies are doing. Now, here's what some local, well, it's not just local, but we're here to talk about local, what some local pharmacies and retail establishments that contain pharmacies, here's what they're getting away with. I could go and buy some cigarettes, which all of you know is no even a habit, but I could do that. And then, right there, I can go buy my asthma medication. Men, you could buy cigarettes, which we know are one of the leading causes of erectile dysfunction. And then, right there, you could go and get Viagra. Okay, this is like one-stop shopping here. It's convenient. And as our county executive said when he signed T-21 into law, we are a culture of convenience, and we have to start making this less convenient. It was brought up that people will just go elsewhere. A lot of data has actually disproven that. Many of them will not go elsewhere. Every three years, there is a global, a world conference on tobacco and health. And it was held this year in March in Cape Town. And there are representatives from countries all over the world at this. And also, my very favorite organization, Action on Smoking and Health, ASH, which is a global organization, too. They were there and very active. And, oh, and what came out of this, I'll be very fast, was a declaration, among many other things. And the declaration said that the right to a tobacco-free world is a human right. And on the topic of human rights, I had the pleasure a few months ago of attending a talk by Vernon Simpson. And the talk was, I'll relate it to this, but the talk was about the proposed cogeneration plan with Sheridan Hallam. Clearly a violation, clearly, totally unconsciously racist. Well, he was making an analogy to cogeneration plans in general not being a good idea. And he said, and this is a direct quote, "There is no such thing as a good cigarette." And I would like to just add to that, there is no such thing as a good pharmacy that sells cigarettes. Thank you.
Caitlin O'Brien.
Good evening, my name is Caitlin O'Brien. I'm the Government Relations Director at the American Heart Association, but I'm also an Albany County resident, which is why I'm here tonight. I'm here to speak in support of tobacco-free pharmacies. You know, there's so many reasons why we should pass this commonsense legislation, but I think the one that really stands out is that tobacco use still remains the leading cause of heart disease and stroke, nation's number-one and number-five killers across the country. You know, it doesn't make it to everyone here. By decreasing the visibility of tobacco products, we can keep future generations from ever becoming addicted in the first place. Tobacco's presence does nothing but offer mixed signals to shoppers regarding the dangers of their use. And if, and if worse, it's a constant temptation to people trying to quit their addiction. Passing this legislation would mean we're one step closer to defeating the tobacco industry once and for all. So thank you for considering this. So thank you for considering this legislation yet again, and I urge everyone to support it. Thank you.
Julie Hart.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Julie Hart. I'm the Government Relations Director for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. And everyone in front of me stole all my material already, so I will be very brief for you. But, you know, thank you for the opportunity to testify. We strongly support this policy, and I know we've been down this road before, and that the county has been down this road before. And Albany County, you really have a strong record when it comes to leading, when it comes to public health, when it comes to fighting big tobacco. You haven't waited, whether it's been selling e-cigarettes to minors, Tobacco 21, calorie labeling. You haven't waited here, you've been ahead of the curve. So I want to congratulate you for that and encourage you to keep doing that in this case. And then I also wanted to mention, follow up, the, you know, Food Industry Alliance talked a little bit about some concerns and wanting to compromise. But, you know, we're not seeing that solution in other places, and it's working, and they have concerns about their bottom line, but the bottom line is that tobacco and pharmacies don't mix. So I strongly encourage you to vote yes, and I'm glad that you're considering this. Thank you.
Mark Catlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you legislators for this opportunity to speak. When I left my office today, I went home, and I told my 14-year-old daughter where I was going. I said, "You know, I have to go back out. There's an important meeting happening with the county legislature." She said, "About what?" I told her what it was about. Then I said, "Did you know, excuse me, did you know that pharmacies can sell cigarettes and tobacco?" And she said, "Why?" That's it. That's, she, my 14-year-old daughter analyzed this in one word, "Why." Pharmacies are places you go. I know they sell other things now, sorry. I know they sell other things now, but they're known for being places that you go to get products to get you better, to keep you well. Pharmacist themselves, my doctor one time said to me when I asked him a question, "Ask a pharmacist." Pharmacist give out information to help your health, to get you better, even to save your life. You know, the old phrase, perception is reality? Well, cigarettes, tobacco, being sold in places that are supposed to be giving you health. So a young person walks in and says, "Well, there's nothing wrong with this. It's being sold in the place where I get my medicine and it gets me better." You know, die in New York State this year due to the use of tobacco. People are dying. Take a step. You all can take a step. How often do you get to take a step to do something, simple as a vote, to save lives? You can do that, and we're asking you to. Please save lives. Please support this legislation. Thank you.
Ilana Knopf.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the time tonight. My name is Ilana Knopf. I am speaking tonight in my capacity of the Director of the Public Health and Tobacco Policy Center at Northeastern University School of Law. And I am contracted through the New York State Department of Health to support tobacco control initiatives. And so I'm not taking any position on this bill, rather, I hope to outline how and why a tobacco-free pharmacy law can be an effective tobacco control policy and a feasible one. So I did come from Boston today, and as you've heard tonight, Massachusetts does have well over half the state population and geography now covered by tobacco-free pharmacy laws. So I will add to the stories of when people asked where I was going this evening, being quite surprised that pharmacies can still sell tobacco products. It's just something in Massachusetts that isn't seen or done, and people forget that it used to be that way. So as we've heard tonight, and as you're all well aware, tobacco products are uniquely dangerous, and accordingly, it's rational and justifiable to regulate sales of those products. Selling them along care, health, alongside healthcare items and everyday items is incongruous, and it importantly distorts the perception of risk of tobacco use. And that perception of risk is an important factor in tobacco use and cessation and continued use. So by removing them, it realigns the true risk of the product. These tobacco pharmacy, tobacco-free pharmacy is a narrow policy. It's narrowly tailored to address this uniquely dangerous product. It is not a trend indicating that it will extend to wider products that you're seeking to remove. This is a specific health, public health epidemic that it's addressing. Effective tobacco control policies make products less accessible, less convenient, and evidence does support that making them less convenient and accessible does have an impact and reduces use, and including for those individuals who are trying to quit and see the tobacco marketing and products and are triggered, their addiction is triggered through those images. We've heard tonight about some hope for voluntary policies and also why those can be ineffective. Voluntary policies can be overturned by corporate headquarters in some instances where a chain may not allow franchisees to make their own decisions, can be overturned on whim, and importantly overturned by lucrative sales contracts that the tobacco industry will float before retailers in order to bring them in and try to have them market and sell the tobacco They are equity promoting policies, given the density of retailers selling tobacco, including in Albany, has been shown to be thicker and denser where, than lower economic populations. And finally, there is authority, of course, for the county to regulate tobacco product sales within the county, and this, we will take, you will take caution from San Francisco's initial decision, they were the first to do it, which tried to exempt big-box stores and, including grocery stores, with pharmacies, and that was not upheld. When they redid the law to treat all pharmacies equal, then the laws have been upheld, implemented elsewhere, and successfully continue today. Thank you very much.
My name is Tammy Miller, and I'm a resident of Albany, New York. My main concern is that the tobacco company took away someone dear that I really loved so much, was my mother. She had lung cancer. And I'm also, and I also was robbed of half of my life with lung cancer, and I quit 14 years ago. Had edema carcinoma, and the blood clog went from the leg to the lung. And I walk, as today I still go in the pharmacy that still sells cigarettes, where I have to get my medication at. No doctor would prescribe tobacco, so why would a pharmacy sell it? I'm going to make this short and brief. I'm just begging and pleading, I am my grandmother, and my great-grandmother, and I would like for the generation that's coming along to have a clean, healthy life and go into the store to the product, to get any products they want besides cigarettes. They are young, they need their lives, and they all started back through the plantation time. And now they're making money. Thank you.
I would also note, a letter received from Phil Konsberg is on the record in the clerk's office. Chairman, there are no more speakers.
Do any of us want chambers to wish to speak? Hearing on the public hearing is now closed.